Okay, good evening. We are gonna call to order our regular board meeting of the Hicksville Exempted Village Board of Education. Roll call, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Iden?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Here. If we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our visitors. We're gonna get started. Mr. Adams, you are up for our Director of Operations report.
Okay, I got a few things to go over here. Just mark some things down. We're ready for snow, but hoping we don't get any. Everything's ready to go. Salt's in stock in the barns and everything. We got on schedule to take both the old mowers over to Beuer's in January for the downtime guarantee program to get them serviced. The new one that we purchased won't need that. They don't have enough hours on it yet to do that, so we didn't feel it was necessary to take that there yet. Christmas break coming up here this next week. We got a long list for the custodial staff, getting carpet shampooed and things like that that we don't get done on a daily basis. December 28th and 29th, we're having fire alarms tested and everything in here, so that's scheduled. It'll include the fieldhouse, too, so we're on the same yearly schedule. 1227 is a kitchen hood. The audiovisual upgrades that I believe Jeff Schaefer was in charge of and everything, those are getting started. And the commons in the main gym will be getting started the 28th, 29th, and 30th of December for all the parts that they have in stock. There are some parts that are not in stock that they'll finish at a later date, but this is the hard part of getting all the wires ran above ceiling, and they agreed to do it while we had some downtime and wouldn't be in the way and everything else, so. The lights for the arch, those are supposed to arrive tomorrow, December 20th. Hopefully that happens. If it does, they'll be installed on the arch over Christmas break as well. Punch list items for the fieldhouse. We've been working through these. Keith and I and Eric met with Alexander Bebo and went over all these the other day. They're hoping to get in here to get a large percentage of them done, not during the school day over Christmas break right here. I believe we finally have almost all the parts in. With that being said, on Friday, the Secure Comm was here and finished hooking up and installing everything that we need for the key fobs system. So the key fob system is currently working. Anyone that has, any teacher, staff member that has a key, we've already went through the computer system and added all the doors to the fieldhouse to it, and their key fobs will now work out there. There are a couple small tweaks that they're gonna make over Christmas break. The ADA doors need to be adjusted, so when they open, the one opens right now and it kicks the other one out. But they're supposed to be coming over Christmas break to do that as well. So all the key fobs are up and running out there, so whenever decided to start doing the memberships, they should be good to go with that now, so. Teachers' desktops came in last week as well when we received the new furniture for the new building. The desktops they sent us were the wrong desktops, and there was quite a backorder on that, so we'll be replacing all those on Christmas break. We received, one of the big things, we received CBD BG grant from Defiance County Commissioners in the amount of $21,300 is what I had marked down here. That was used for the air purification system to be installed building-wide. It includes the new athletic complex and academic complex. The total cost ended up being $21,090, $210 under the grant. Stark's Plumbing and Heating installed all these and air units two weeks ago, I believe, now, so. It was five commercial photodiyanization units, and the five were enlarged makeup air units. Two smaller Halo LED purification units were installed in the two smaller makeup air units. And all the devices were installed based on the maximum CFM. Any kind of germs that breaks it all down and all that kind of stuff, anything that goes through the makeup units that's supposed to kind of destroy it, so that'd be good to have that in.
So that's up and running now?
It is up and running, yes. Yep. Yep, there's bulbs. What they are is they're bulb units that go through, so there will be, I can't remember exactly what the life expectancy is, but we'll have to replace the bulbs at some point in time. But, you know, those are supposed to help with the air filter process and everything because it breaks all the dust particles down and everything else, so.
Just in time for flu season.
Yeah, yeah, so. I think that's kind of all I had on my report here, so.
Great. Great, John.
You're gonna be busy over...
Yes, Christmas break is very busy, yeah.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments? All righty, moving right along. Mr. Altman?
The middle school suicide awareness assembly that was scheduled for December 10th was canceled because of our school closure, so we're working to find an alternate day to make that up. Right now, it's looking at the spring, though. It would be the earliest time for their schedule and our schedule. Christmas for kids, we were able to help out 29 families this Christmas, K-12, through different agencies, staff members, organizations, community churches, families, and businesses. We'd like to thank all those that are involved and willing to help our kids during the holidays. That would be Shop With A Cop, NIMCO, Hicksville Pharmacy, Community Memorial Hospital, Hicksville Cornerstone Church, Smiles For Jess, and families from our community that wish to remain anonymous. Our middle school is actually hosting a holiday fun day on Wednesday. Our middle school teachers wanted to send the kids home during the holiday break with some fun. Each grade level took it upon themselves to plan a festive day for their kids. Students should come this Wednesday in their holiday PJs, ready for some fun. Part of that holiday fun is some inflatables in the new fieldhouse that Shelley Weatherhead organized, and it was funded by the PTO. The middle school grades will each get 30-minute block of time to play on the inflatables during the morning on Wednesday. And finally, value-added. Our teachers have always been great at using data to drive their instruction, but with new teacher evaluation system, we wanted to better support our staff in doing this. Jane Myers helped put together a binder for each administrator about our value-added and put all the data together in a way that we could easily understand it better. Value-added has a ton of data out there, so she's able to organize it for us and our teachers. So this will help us administrators help our teachers using their data. The middle school is also sending four teachers to teach with value-added PD in January at the ESC with the goal of then coming back to educate the rest of our grade-level teams in content areas during our collaboration meetings. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Slattery?
Everything he said, we're doing that, all the fun stuff. And the value-added stuff, we appreciate that Jane Myers has taken it upon herself to create those binders for our staff and break down that data so it's usable information. Because of OTES 2.0 and the transition there, it's gone from the idea of student growth to teacher growth and taking valid and reliable data and using that data from our classrooms to implement the teaching strategies and the pacing, everything that we're doing in there. So again, I appreciate Mr. Altman covering all those topics. On the high school side, of course, for all of us, the first semester of the school year is flying by. It's hard to believe we're in week seven of week nine of the second quarter. The semester for Hicksville schools will end on Friday, January 14th, so when we return from Christmas break, we'll still have, hopefully, 10 days of school at that point to finish up the semester. Back in October, 30 of our juniors took the PSAT. The results of these tests have been printed off and mailed to our juniors as of today. Please contact the HHS office if you have any questions about the PSAT scores. Fall testing for students was originally scheduled for the second week of December. We've kind of pushed that back a little bit. We actually have a 15-day window that we create within a two-month period. Our window is gonna open up the week we come back from Christmas break. The goal is to look at the individual students, do almost like an audit of their graduation plan. And please keep in mind, with things changing, we tend to do quite a few audits, I guess, because our senior requirements are different from our junior requirements. And so we created a schedule for the first week back from Christmas break where we will be testing, I believe, four different seniors. Three of them are movements from out of state that are required to take specific tests for graduation. And then, of course, another student that it's necessary for them to retake some of these tests to score that total of 18 points. And then, of course, with the junior class of beyond graduation expectations, it's more about being proficient in Algebra I and ELA II. Algebra I is technically a freshman test, ELA II is a sophomore test. And being proficient means typically it's like scoring a three, but that's not even true anymore, because I think you can score a triple-digit score of 682, which is technically a two, counts as a three now. Like I said, it's always something interesting to go through, so we're spending a lot of time making sure we're breaking down that data, getting the right kids in the right place for graduation. Also, along those lines of doing audits, I was working with Four County Career Center over the last month, and of course Northwest State with our CCP kids. And I was informed by the counselors from those two schools that Hicksville's transcripts aren't the easiest to work with, and they don't provide enough data to where you can efficiently take the information we're providing and input it directly into what they need to allow a smooth transition for our students. I want to thank Holly Horn, she's our Four County Career Center counselor, and of course Jeff Schaefer and Erin Montgomery. And keep in mind, Erin Montgomery, who was our elementary counselor, she used to be a high school counselor. With that said, I think within 48 hours of receiving that information from Four County and Northwest State, we took it upon ourselves to request some of the better transcripts in the area that the schools use. And we took that information and created a brand-new transcript. I did not bring a copy of one for you to see, but if you have an interest in seeing one, they're very nice-looking. The information provided is not only the credits that they've earned for each grade level in high school, but it also has all-state testing and updated state testing, because actually OGT was still on there. It will also have the credit hours required for graduating from Hicksville schools in the state, and it will break down where the credits align, whether it's based on your core credits, your elective credits, your required, like for example, you're required a fine arts credit, you're required a financial management credit, things like that. So again, the information provided, I think, is very user-friendly, and it will streamline our kids going to Four County and of course to the different universities and colleges. The sophomore class visited Four County Career Center on Friday, December 3rd. I took the opportunity to go to that visitation. It was the first time I've done that. It was very exciting to see all the sophomores in the Four County area attending. It was a great day for our sophomores, and it's been really interesting to see the number of kids that are enrolling at Four County with that early enrollment process, so I'm excited for them. Mrs. Perna is assisting with the preparation for the junior ACT administration. I really want to give her a shout-out because what we have to do for the ACT each year is it's a multi-step process in preparation for our students, and we actually have to contact every parent who has a student that's on an IEP, because we have to get their blessing to state that it's okay to release the IEP accommodations that are necessary for them to take the ACT. And then, of course, some of our other students, they may have the opportunity to opt out of taking that ACT test overall, so it's a lot of phone calls and a lot of time, and I appreciate her assistance in doing that. I believe that process must be completed by January 7th, and then I believe by January 14th, we have to upload all of our students in preparation for the Tuesday, March 1st date of the ACT. I want to give a shout-out to our staff and students for decorating the hallways, classrooms, the home-based doors, and of course the office and celebrate the holiday season. It's been really nice walking through the entire school, not just the elementary school, and seeing all the Christmas spirit. I know the kids have really enjoyed it. I appreciate the staff, you know, dressing up on the dress-up days, and it's been a really good week and a half in these hallways with all the Christmas fun going on. I know he covered all the Christmas Fun Day events, but I do want to state that at the high school side, we will be doing a lot of what they're doing, sharing the space, completing the same tasks. And of course, we also do karaoke. We're gonna enjoy the inflatables, which will be in the fieldhouse. We appreciate Mrs. Weatherhead and her organizing that, and of course many classroom activities and competitions. Thank you.
One comment on the transcript thing. The dashboard format sounds awesome. I'd love to check it out. That's a great idea.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been requested in the past. I just didn't realize that, and then once it was requested of me, I kind of investigated and realized, you know, our transcripts are not very user-friendly. So then I actually had the opportunity to see what other schools were providing their students and parents and, of course, the universities. I was like, yeah, we need to update this. So we've got some other things we've recognized that need to be changed and updated, and hopefully those will wait till summer, so.
I do not have a Four County report, so we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Yep, as Mike mentioned already, we had our second closure. It was for FOG. I continue also to have my weekly COVID meetings with the county nurse and the superintendent, superintendents in the county. What we're seeing is a greater increase in the flu that's being reported right now, so encourage people to continue to keep their kids home if they're running a fever, and they should be fever-free for 24 hours before they send them back. Jeff and I met with a couple town council members, the village administrator, and two people who are working on a Safe Routes to School grant with us. What we're hoping to get is sidewalk added on the west side of High Street to where it ends, right down the street here, clear to the parking lots across the street where the Dairy Delight area is. In addition, we're also hoping to get a flashing crosswalk light installed that would be down near the creek by that empty lot area. So that's all great news, good chance that we'll get that. The bad news is, if we get it, it won't start till 2024, the work. So that's three years away, almost. Today was an incredible day. Special thanks to Erin Montgomery and Kirsten Kaufman for their work putting together a Polar Express Day for our kindergarten through fourth-grade students. They came in yesterday, and I had a bus out front for them, and they decorated the bus on the inside. I was able to serve as the conductor of the train, which was one of the best days in weeks that I've had here. It's a lot of fun. I spent the whole day with kids. It took about an hour for each group, so we were, I was going back and forth most of the day. We took them to the Huber, and when we got there, Kirsten gave them a little history snippet of the Huber and how long it's been there and what it was used for and so forth. And then we served the kids milk and cookies, and then we had on the big screen a presentation that we had gotten where the Polar Express book was read to the kids, and so it was a pretty exciting day. Fourth grade, it didn't seem quite as magical as it did for the other ones, but kindergarten, first grade, and second grade, they were pretty thrilled. So if you didn't have a golden ticket, you weren't allowed to get on the train, so I was the one that got to check all that, so it was a lot of fun. So special thanks to Erin and Kirsten, who have really went above and beyond this week with special activities and stuff for the kids last week and this week, so thank you. Oh, I do have a picture here that I'll pass around that shows kind of what we did. And then the other thing I have is in pertinence to Craig, since this is your last meeting, more bad news. We're gonna miss you, Craig. It's been awesome having you on.
As a board member for the last 10 years?
10 years, yep.
10 years, so we have a little something there for you from all of us, so.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's truly been an honor. Thank you.
And that's all I have.
I have to say, Craig, I think you, most of all, sometimes your opinions are contrary to mine, and you make me think, and that's always a good thing. You've changed my opinion numerous times, so I thank you. You've done a great job.
I appreciate that. You know, it really takes different mindsets, different thoughts, and, you know, everybody kind of brings something unique to the table, and I'm sure Eric's gonna do a fabulous job, but, you know, 10 years went really quick, and I've always appreciated Keith's leadership, and I've always appreciated the board members I've been on, and it's a wonderful experience, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, fun part. Minutes in financials. In devotion. Steph, right? Okay. And Galen. Minutes from the regular board meeting on November 22nd, 2021. The Treasurer's Consent Agenda Items: Cash Reconciliation as of November 30th, '21; Financial Statements for November 21; Approved Amended Official Certificate of Estimated Resources for Fiscal Year '22 as Presented; Total General Fund Resources of $15,398,024.44; and Total Resources for All Funds of $21,225,989.19; Approved the Amended Fiscal Year '22 Permanent Appropriations as Presented; Total General Fund Appropriations of $11,244,012.47; and Total Appropriations for All Funds of $14,590,350.25. The following donations: $50 from Francis LaDey for the High School Musical Fund; $150 from John Manville for Boys Basketball; $500 from the Wholesale House for the Elementary Principals Fund; 500 from Sweetwater Sound for the High School Musical Fund; $1,635.64 from the PTO for the Elementary Principals Fund; and $1,000 from the Ohio State Eagles Charity Fund for the 10K. Mike, any comments or...
Yes, I'd like to add a few things. First, I provided monthly balance reports, the new reporting system off the new software for both Food Service Fund and Athletic Fund for the past four years. And in there, you will see that the Lunchroom Fund is significantly stronger. We're still in the hole, but we're, and the way things play out through the year, we are in much better shape than we were at the end of November of last year. And we're also better than we were in years two and three in the past. So that's good news there from the Lunchroom. The Athletic Department is right about where they were a year ago, almost identical, and stronger than they were years two and three in the past. So some good news on both those fronts. Also, wanted to mention, last month, when discussing the five-year forecast, I spoke about some of the history of school financing in the state of Ohio, including the four House Supreme Court rulings that the Deroff school funding issue was unconstitutional. Some legislators and school finance practitioners throughout the state have made attempt to fix school funding with the Fair School Funding Plan partially implemented within House Bill 110. With that said, there is new legislation out there called House Bill 290, and it's referred to as the Backpack Scholarship Program. I have included Resolution 2203 in your agenda, asking for opposition to the passage of House Bill 290. As it currently, as it is currently written, House Bill 290 would allow $5,500 for K-8 students and $7,500 for 912 students. That's per year, per student, to go to a statewide universal voucher program. Incidentally, these amounts are greater than the amount that we receive for students from the state. The state of Ohio only has so much money that they can put towards K-12 education, and implementation of this backpack bill could cost upwards of $1 billion or more per year. The impact of this backpack bill and the future Fair School Funding Plan is unknown, but it would no doubt be detrimental to the future further phase-in of the Fair School Funding Plan. I'd also like to say our residents and people living in the small rural towns of Northwest Ohio, let alone throughout the state of Ohio, our lives and our identity and stuff is associated with our schools and our communities. They're intertwined. You know, if you think about one town, you think about their sports teams, their bands, their academic teams, their school colors and their nicknames. The school districts are central to the well-being of these small communities. And if House Bill 290 becomes law, we could potentially see large dollars leave our district to go elsewhere, oftentimes not only outside of our community, but even outside of Northwest Ohio. If this happens, where will it leave our school? How will it affect our community? I think those are questions for people to ask themselves. Those are questions essentially being brought up by this resolution. And also, along with that, I have a, and I provided it to the board, Vouchers Hurt Ohio is an organization that has put together a little sheet on eight lies about private school vouchers. And I'd like to briefly kind of just run through these, but the first one is, when it comes to education, one size doesn't fit all. That is one of the talking points from people within the voucher community. The question is, what does this mean? Is this a one-liner that is supposed to indict traditional public schools as having no options or choices within the system? The public system has a variety of choices in curricular, co-curricular, and athletic options. In fact, the typical school district has significantly more choices for students than the typical private school. Vouchers Hurt Ohio graded these eight lies, and they all were graded as Fs, including this one. The second one that's spoken out there is, "School Choice Saves Taxpayer Money." The universal voucher bill creates a new bloated bureaucracy in the state treasurer's office with a file for every student that will cost, not save, taxpayers millions and millions of dollars. Again, graded as an F. It's said by the voucher proponents that competition breeds excellence. Free-market principles have been applied to public schools to promote segregation and institutional racism. This same misleading answer was given to justify charter schools like E-COT. E-COT, for anybody not familiar with them, was an online school that was bringing in over $100 million per year for students from schools from throughout the entire state of Ohio, and a lot of these students weren't even active. They reported them falsely. There's been lawsuits. E-COT is no longer a school as we speak, but that money came from our taxpayers. That money came from our district and the districts throughout. And none of us, as far as I know, have ever been paid back that money that was taken from us to go to schools such as E-COT. So along, number four, all students benefit from education freedom. Students benefit from quality educational opportunity. Strong public schools strengthen our communities. Your scheme will harm our students, our families, our taxpayers, our homeowners, and our communities. A grade of an F. It goes on. Lie number five, parents are powerless to fight against political and sexualized material. School district patrons have the opportunity to be heard at board meetings with elected school boards. A lot of charter schools do not have elected school boards. They are not, their boards are not very easily attainable, and factors even some of them that their people don't even live in the state of Ohio. But they have access, they have access, people in our communities to, our public schools have access to school administrators and teachers. Parents are not powerless in influencing the direction of traditional public schools. Public schools also accept all children. Private schools pick and choose their enrollees. I've found it personally a great misleading when the voucher community says, "School Choice." They want to offer school choice. It's often not the parent's school choice, it's not the student's school choice, it is very often the charter school's school choice. Who are they gonna pick? Who are they not gonna pick? There is definitely agenda, an agenda for that. Lie number six, too many public schools are well-funded but underperforming. Quick history lesson, and we've talked about this, in 1997, the House Supreme Court ruled the way lawmakers and the governor funds public education in Ohio is unconstitutional. That is, of course, the Deroff lawsuit. In 2021, a quarter century later, after passing the two-year In two thousand twenty-one, a quarter century later, after passing the two-year state budget, lawmakers and Governor DeWine admitted they are not fully funding public schools. Number seven, fund teachers and students, not bureaucrats. I kind of find this one interesting, too. This statement is inaccurate, is meant to inflame Ohioans against the public system. For example, public funds cannot be used to support politicians or political campaigns. We do not have that ability, and I think rightfully so, to, cannot use our taxpayer dollars to influence in those areas. However, private schools can and do, and they do by tens of hundreds and millions of dollars to influence politics and political campaigns. Number eight, Ohio doesn't under-fund education, they say public schools misspend the money. The massive misspending by the state has been tens of millions of fraudulent dollars given to charter school operators like Bill Lager and E-COT. Again, E-COT. When they went out of business, they were collecting well over a hundred million dollars per year for students. E-COT also spent millions of dollars in lobbying, millions of dollars in lawsuits, millions of dollars in advertising. Those are all millions of dollars that could have been for education. Instead, they went to other things. So anyways, that is my spiel on basically the backpack bill, House Bill two-ninety. If you pass it, I will send out copies of our resolution to our, our local state representatives, Senate and House representatives. I will also send it to the chairs of the Senate and the House, and to Governor DeWine.
You know, I was sitting here thinking about Jeff complaining about OTAS and evaluations and stuff, but really, it is sometimes that oversight that we have to abide by, you know, that those charter schools don't have to abide by. They don't have to make sure that, you know, all their teachers are licensed and, you know, teaching the classes that they're supposed to. I mean, we are held accountable for every dime we spend, and where we spend it, and who we spend it on, and, you know, it's a pain, but it's so necessary when it comes to your kids, you know, and they don't have to follow those rules.
Yeah, and I've been, I've seen where there's a couple hundred of laws that public schools have to follow that charter schools do not have to follow, which even makes it a little more disgraceful to me that they can try to set them up to get greater funding than what we do from the state, when, yes, we do have many, many restrictions to follow, procedures to follow, that other places, other schools do not have to adhere to.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, so I need a roll call for the financials.
Okay, thank you, Madam President. Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. I need a motion for the Resolution number twenty-two zero-three, the Resolution to Express Opposition to the Passage of House Bill two-ninety.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay. Steph and Mindha, thank you. Roll call?
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero, and thank you, Mike, for sending that on, so that way the state will know how we feel.
Thank you.
Will it, will it go to the newspaper?
Well, whatever they want.
I wonder if it could be printed or if...
Those mess that he...
Yeah, I wonder how we could get any of that, how could we get any of that out?
It's, it's already on, online, I mean, you just have to...
Yeah, but...
If you send it to us, we can share it as well, to our Facebook page or something.
Okay. Yeah, whatever, you know, you ask for, you're going to put in, then let me know, and I'll provide you whatever I can.
That would be great. Okay, I need a motion for employment of certified staff?
I'll move. Second.
Craig, Galen. Recommend to approve the following as certified staff substitutes for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year, Jessica Blazing and Kelsey Clemmons. Roll call?
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. We are going to skip down to, we have an addendum to our report, an addendum to employment of certified staff, I need a motion.
I'll move.
Galen, thank you. It was page seven. I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Craig.
Let's ask him to look her second back.
Recommend to approve the following as Title I tutors for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year rate, at a rate of a hundred and fifteen with a maximum of one hundred and seventy-nine days, to be funded through the federal Title I-A grant funds, Kelsey Clemmons.
Just so you know, Kelsey was on the substitute list, and we had her on there because she's a recent graduate, and we didn't have her certificate yet, but we could employ her as a substitute, but we couldn't officially employ her as the title teacher until we received her certificate, and we received that today, which is why we added this addendum on there. So she's already started, and will be working in our, with our title department.
Awesome. Roll call?
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. I need a motion for employment of classified staff?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph and Mindha, thank you. Recommend to approve a one hundred and fifty dollar per occurrence stipend for, to John Adams and Eric Basset for snow removal during non-school hours. Recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the twenty-one-twenty-two school year, Gabe Inkrott in archery and Melissa Sanders, archery. Questions, comments? Okay, roll call?
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs., Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. I need a motion for other business?
I'll move. I'll second.
Galen and Craig. Recommend to approve the following resolution, the temporary expansion of the employment of substitute teachers, which I am not going to read.
Basically, what this is saying is that we can, with different qualifications, employ teachers as substitutes through the remainder of this year because of the sub shortage.
And that's just a continuation of what we've had going on during COVID anyways, so...
Right. Since we raised the price, the salaring, the daily, has that helped any? No?
It's just really hard to find people, period.
Yeah.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes five-zero. Old business.
The water on the road.
No updates.
And there's, the engineer is not in any way, can be held accountable.
You mean, the architect?
The architect, engineer, yeah, whoever designed the water flow for that area.
I would need to talk to the school attorneys about that, and can?
Because essentially, it's...
It was designed wrong.
It's appropriate, I mean, no, I mean, I think it's okay that they, we don't like it, we don't want it that way, but I don't know that they...
Yeah, but it was designed wrong, the water flow is going...
Well, it was designed so that the water would flow over the drive, and it does do that. The problem...
Why would you do that?
Well, the problem, Mindha, the way I understand it, is that it's from the end of, down by eighteen, that drain is not big enough, that goes across the road, over to the railroad tracks, and then down to get to the creek, is not large enough to accommodate that water that is now going to go that direction.
Even if it was big enough, why would you design it to run over the road in Northwest Ohio?
Well, I asked that very question when we were all out there that day, so... Yeah.
Okay.
Because, I mean, I would have done it, but I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer, but I would have put the drains on the west side of the road, caught the water before it went across, so that it wouldn't go across the road, but...
I mean, you know, if they would have, our structure, you know, the roof falls in, you know, you designed it, you know, you fix it, and I kind of agree with what, you know, with what Ben is saying, that we need to reach out and say, hey, is this, was this appropriate, I mean, you know, I don't know, I guess, whatever the attorney may suggest.
Yeah, I still, I believe, I'm not one hundred percent positive, but I, and I haven't talked to the owner of the nursing home or, the facility that's going in down there, can't think of the word I wanted to use, but you know what I mean? Not a nursing home, but...
It's a nursing home assisted living.
Thank you, there you go. And so, we have kind of a tentative agreement that, that they'll still help us with that water problem. So I just don't have anything in writing yet, and, and they're, they have started with soil borings and that kind of stuff, so I think they still plan on starting yet this fall, but that's not going to fix our water problem right now.
Right, another year at least.
You know, I don't look for that to happen until spring, but the way I understood it, Mr. White was willing to help us out with that, and so hopefully, as we, as they progress in their project, I'll get more information as it, as it moves down the line.
Yeah, it could change things completely. Who knows?
Yes, they need a lot of dirt, so...
Oh, that's right, we talked about that, yeah.
We have some dirt that maybe can do a little swap.
Trade.
Yeah.
I'm working on that, but we got to get, they got to start building first, so...
So are we, you know, have we talked to kids about the fact that water freezes and it's cold weather, and, you know, it's close to the road, and...
You start a conversation with the first thing, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not positive, Mindha, but, I mean, I've been trying to keep a good eye on it, and the only time it goes across the road is when we get a lot of water, number one. And then it only backs up when we get a lot of water, and it eventually does go away. So I could see it potentially being an issue if, if and when we get like a lot of snow, and it's banked up there, and then as that snow melts, it's not going to sink down into the ground because the ground's frozen, which then is when it might go across the road, and not because a lot of, there's a lot of it, it's just because it won't be able to soak down into the ground. Where now, what we're seeing is, the only time we have water going across that road is when we get a lot of water in a hurry. But I think that will change with winter because of the ground being frozen. If the ground's frozen, obviously, the water's not going to drain down into the ground, which then, I think, is when we'll run into the freezing problem at night. So...
Well, I'm sure Eric will keep an eye out on it.
We'll see him out there with shovels along the side of the road. Yeah.
Squeegees.
Yeah, squeegees.
So, Mr. Slattery, I wanted to bring up the athletic code as we're getting close to summer, and we need to make sure that the athletic code gets updated for the summer before, so that way it's ready for fall sports, because we all know they start early.
Mr. Hall and I have been discussing that, time is a problem right now, so...
Right.
We've been looking at some handbook training, maybe you'll have our handbook, if you go down to Columbus and sit there, you can work with some people to assist you developing a code that, I guess, is reasonable for today's day and age, and supports what we want for, you know, what we buy at the department, but also is something that's, I don't want to say bold and poor, but you know, it's what it's supposed to do, so...
Well, and I know when we're talking, I sent the athletic code out to the board members, my thought is, if we make some comments on it and send that to you, that maybe you could work with those, and then work, you know, go forward with some of our thoughts. Because really, I think even if we remove things, that's a good start, and if it's amended athletic code for this coming year, and maybe then amend it even more in the future when...
And our, our handbook's kind of the same layer, our, our teacher handbook and our student handbook, I mean, it's been honestly, over the last probably thirty years, just kind of chopped up and put together and chopped up and put together, year after year, it needs to be, I guess, audited and looked at.
Does Oklahoma have a handbook suggestion? I mean, you know, I would think what they would provide to us would be a little more, I guess, have...
They do give us guidelines every year that I forward on to Mr. Slattery and Mr. Altman and Mrs. Kaufman, yes, for things to make sure that are in it or removed, is what they, what they're suggesting. They're not suggesting an actual handbook, but they're suggesting what needs to be in it and what needs to come out.
I think to Jen's point, it would at least, our intent would, would start the conversation for, where to revamp it.
And again, I don't, we don't like to micromanage our admin, and that's not the point of this, it's more of just, this is what we're thinking, take it and run.
Yeah, well, part of the problem we run into, just as, I mean, as every school district is, because, you know, I mean, with the four high principals and the GMC principals, you know, and not to make this all a high school issue, but to be able to deal with different problems in the middle school, elementary school, is just, society is changing, and things are changing, and the laws, of course, supporting, you can agree with or disagree with, is changing, and it's, I mean, I've said it before, when I go to my conference at the OASFA hall, or if I legislate committees I'm a part of, and someone raises a dress code, and we start talking about it, and I tell them, "My dress code," ninety percent of the hundred look at me and go, "You have a dress code? How is that possible? It's not equal." You know, and they, and they look at me like I'm, you know, we're just so different up here, where we're at, because of the rural communities and the expectation's a little different, but, you know, they tell you flat out, "Your court wall, that will not hold up, that will not hold up," and they're right, it won't, you know, but it's our, it's our expectations that we're in, we can't support those within reason.
Right.
And we have made changes, we have loosened things up. I was actually on Twitter last night, it was kind of funny, I thought about you, of course, but, you know, dress code, him and I have the conversations we have, there's a, there's a school district that's being attacked by their teaching staff because they have professional conduct and professional dress expectations in their school, and the teachers are fighting it, saying, "You can't choose what we wear and what we don't wear, but you can be the one who picks what's professional and not professional," you know, like, "I'm interested to see how that turns out." You know, so it's, it's not just with the students, it's with the staff, too, and how things have changed.
Yeah.
Well, I think we'll make a mistake if we go along with whatever the status quo out there is, just to go.
Also, since, that in on that topic? Also, since the FOB system stuff's working out there, I'll get with Jeff and Jeff and Eric, and we'll get an announcement ready and finalize everything and, and get that out so that the public can start getting the FOBs and utilizing the facility, the walking tracks.
Okay, any other discussion or old business? Okay, any unannounced guests wishing to address the board? Okay. We will be going into executive session for number one regarding employment issues, and I do want to let everybody know, we will not be taking any action afterwards, but our next meeting, if we drop down, will be January tenth at five-thirty, so that is one week earlier than our normal time due to the Ohio revised code and our organizational meeting, so just wanted to make sure everybody knew that. So I need a motion to go into executive session.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Steph and Galen, thank you. Let's say six-twenty-five? And roll call?
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methvin?
Yes.
Mr. Iden?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
And Mrs. Carrier?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0.